Good morning. Can everyone hear me, those of you online? Someone give me a thumbs up or a...
This is Commissioner Frye, I can hear it.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Glad to.
Got it. We will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Vice Chair Armstrong will take the lead.
Thank you, Pam. We have a quorum with seven in person, and I believe commissioners online. We're going to go ahead and get started. The first item on the agenda this morning is roll call vote. Pam?
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Brinkard, are you present? Commissioner Condolario?
Present.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Present.
Commissioner Frye?
Present.
Commissioner Williams? I see you online, Commissioner Williams. If you're having difficulty, will, um, send me a chat. Commissioner Paladugu?
Present.
Commissioner Patton?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Rosatos? Chair Thompson on his way. Commissioner Velasquez? He did send me an email that he won't be present, but for the record, I wanted to call his name. Commissioner V Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Zemlik? Okay, so Commissioner McWilliams, you're not able to hear us. Do you have your volume raised? There, I do see Commissioner McWilliams online, and she has been communicating through the text. But if you want to move on to the next agenda item, I'll see if I can't work with her on her volume.
Okay, thanks, Pam. A quick question on whether or not you can vote if she hasn't been able to verbally affirm?
I would say she'd have to verbally be engaged in the...
Understood.
So if we can get that fixed, that would be great.
We'll go ahead and move forward for now.
And if I could just say one thing, Vice Chair, make sure everyone pulls the microphone as close to you. It's a directional microphone. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Next on our agenda is approval of the agenda. We will need a motion in a second.
I would move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Second?
Okay, that was Commissioner Condolario. You moved, and...
Commissioner V Hill.
I'm sorry, V Hill. Thank you. And Commissioner Brinkard? Okay, thank you. Vice Chair, how do you vote on the agenda?
Yes, we will need a roll call.
Sorry. Commissioner Brinkard?
Yes.
Commissioner Condolario?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Frye?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams, can you hear us? Commissioner Paladugu, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner V Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Zemlik?
Yes.
Vice Chair, the agenda is approved.
Thank you, Pam. Next on our agenda is approval of the May 13th, 2024 minutes. Any proposed changes to that? If not, I will need a motion in a second. What's your record?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, there was a question about who seconded. I think Pam couldn't figure out on item five. Mine simply has a V, so I guess that could be V Hill or Velasquez.
Would be V Hill then, because I think Commissioner Velasquez was absent. So thank you.
And so on item six, when we did actually go around, you referred to Commissioner Vasquez, but it's Commissioner Velasquez.
Thank you. I'll make that change.
So, um, what else? If not, I'll move approval of the minutes of our last meeting, May 13th, as amended.
My second.
And we have a motion from Commissioner Brinkard and second from Commissioner V Hill. Pam?
Thank you. Vice Chair Armstrong, how do you vote? Commissioner Brinkard?
Yes.
Commissioner Condolario?
I'll abstain.
Abstain, okay. Commissioner Dominguez? Say that once more, Mr. Commissioner V Hill, I mean Dominguez. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Frye?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams? Commissioner Paladugu?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Commissioner V Hill?
Yes.
Yes.
And Commissioners Zemlik?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item four on our agenda is public comment. Pam, did you receive any requests to make a public comment for this meeting?
I've received no request for to make a public comment, no.
Thank you. Do we have anybody who has not made a request, but who's with us either virtually or in person, who would like to make a public comment this morning? Being none, we will go ahead and move on to the next item, which is the Clean Water State Revolving Fund interest memo.
Commissioner McWilliams, you can hear us here on your phone now?
I believe we expect Rhonda Holgerman from NMD's Construction Programs Bureau to present this memo. I don't see Rhonda on the screen or here in person yet this morning. I guess we can move to the next item and hear from Rhonda when she joins us. Item six on our agenda is WQCC 2431R in the matter of the petition to amend the standards for interstate and intrastate surface waters. Request for hearing, Rose.
Uh, thank you, Ms., Mr. Vice Chair. My name is, for the record, my name is Louis Rose. I'm an attorney with Montgomery &amp; Andrews here in Santa Fe. We represent Newport News Nuclear. In the petition, with me is Kerry Olson, an attorney at M&amp;A, and also we have Maureen Dolan, an attorney at Triad, who's here. They're also joining in this petition. The details, I think, in terms of the history and the basis for the petition are laid out in the petition, and I'll try to briefly summarize why we think it's appropriate to go to hearing and try to keep away from discussing the substance of the proposal. As we point out in the petition, EPA has adopted, most recently adopted, copper water quality criteria. They've adopted criteria early. It's been amended a couple of times. The latest criteria was adopted in 2007, and under the Clean Water Act states either have to adopt that or explain to EPA why they're not adopting the criteria. They can propose alternative criteria as well, but it would require EPA approval. New Mexico's gone through at least a couple of triennial reviews where the issue of adopting the copper criteria were not directly addressed. At the last triennial, you may remember, the issue was brought up and the department identified that that it wasn't ready to propose the EPA criteria, because some of the analysis that were required to implement the criteria could not effectively be run by the state laboratory. The DOE and the contractors at Los Alamos looked at the issue, and what the copper criteria requires is implementation of the Bionic Ligon model, which requires more than a handful of data points and different data to implement. It's really a software program that gives a result based on a number of different factors. The laboratory and the contractors had sufficient data, they believe, to run the BLM effectively, and had looked at potentially proposing it to you, at least insofar as the streams on the Pariro Plateau are concerned. And looking at the BLM, it was apparent, at least to the DOE and the companies, that that the model was sort of a black box, and that it would be difficult for the public and others to to determine what an appropriate criteria would be if they didn't have access to the model to be able to run it and reach criteria. As a result, DOE and the companies looked at alternatives, and before you, and there's a document that explains the analysis, but the companies and DOE have come up with what they believe is an equation that replicates the results of the BLM, but only requires three factors to implement. And what we're asking you to do is to adopt that that criteria, both chronic and acute criteria for the streams on the Pariro Plateau, based on the analysis and the proposal. As you'll see from the petition, the parties have met with the department. Proposal's been sent to EPA for comment, received comments, the responses to comments in the petition as well. There was also a public process where the proposal was vetted to various interest groups, and a public meeting was held concerning that, and the results of those meetings and the response to comments are included in the petition. We believe, rather than waiting for the next triennial, that at least as to those streams on the Pariro Plateau, that the criteria that we're proposing is the best science for protection of aquatic life being exposed to copper, and we believe it's not appropriate to wait for the next triennial to do so. So we are proposing that this commission go to hearing and after hearing adopt revised criteria that are contained in the in the petition. As I said, we've been meeting with the Environment Department. In addition to getting their comments, and hopefully they'll indicate their approval on the proposal. We've met with them also in terms of process going forward, looked at potential hearing dates that we can certainly discuss if the commission decides to go to hearing. It looks like at this point, since your rules require at least 60 days' public notice of a hearing, we'd be looking at public hearing probably in October or later. The department seems to be available for an October hearing. November and December seem to be more problematic, but we'll let them kind of discuss if the commission gets there, sort of their position. Haven't heard from any of the NGOs who have an interest as to their preference, but I think an October hearing date in conjunction with the commission's October meeting probably be appropriate. We anticipated a two-day hearing that was based on expectation that there would be some opposition to the proposed standards. We would request that, as normally with these kinds of hearings, that there be a schedule with prefiled written direct and rebuttal testimony before the hearing, hopefully then expediting the hearing time. But I think it's our expectation that that two days would be necessary to complete this hearing. So with that, Mr. Vice Chair, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Chair Thompson has joined us now, gotten through the traffic on I-25, so I will defer to him going forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rose. Questions or comments from the commission?
Brinkard? Thank you. Mr. Rose, and maybe this is directed to the department. This would normally be part of a triennial review, and so why is it not?
I can let the department speak for themselves, or the parties, or the petitioners. We believe that that this is sufficiently specific, that it's more appropriate to do as an individual rulemaking that is part of the triennial. The triennial usually deals with issues across the board all over the state. This is unique to the copper criteria and unique to the streams on the Pariro Plateau. So we think it's probably better to focus on that than do as part of the triennial. As I indicated in my opening remarks, the department, at least originally, had decided not to move forward with the EPA copper criteria from 2007. Don't know when, if they've changed their position, nor, you know, the triennial's supposed to happen, I guess, by definition every three years. It's a question about whether that actually happens. And so I think we, I don't know when ED is looking at the initiating the next triennial and what they have in terms of what they wish to address during that criteria, but we think the issue's ready now to be addressed, and at this point, don't think it's necessary to wait until the next triennial, whenever that may be.
Thank you. Is there someone here from the Environment Department who can address the triennial review question?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Lisa Chai. I represent the Environment Department and the Bureau in this matter. I can tell you that the Bureau does not oppose these proposed rules as presented in the petition filed by the landal contractors. As to the question of the timing of the triennial review, that would be a question for the Bureau. We do have one person from the Bureau present, but at the last conversations with the landal contractors and the bureaus, it was my understanding that the Bureau did not oppose the position for the proposed rules, and we were prepared to go forward. And if the commission does decide to conduct a hearing, then an October hearing date to conclude on or before October 24th would fit within our schedules.
Yes, ma'am.
That's okay. Shall I repeat?
Okay. Hi, Lynette Guevara, Program Manager, the Monitoring Assessment Standards Section. And we agree that this is best as a third-party petition. 20.6.4 NMAC allows for third-party petitions. And so this is our department preference as well, that this go forward as a third-party petition outside of the triennial. Regarding the timing of the triennial, just a heads up that we're aiming to petition around October or November 2025 for a 2026 triennial.
I guess I'm a little taken aback here, because federal regulations require that we have a hearing every three years, and the last hearing began July 2021, years ago. So, um, I, we're going to be in violation of federal law pretty soon. So let me throw this out. Could this petition be the triennial review?
May I respond?
Please.
Federal regulations require that we petition within three years of EPA's approval of our last triennial review. And so we will be within that three-year period. So we will not be in violation of our federal regulations. This cannot be in lieu of the triennial. This is a third-party petition as defined in our regulations.
Thank you, Ms. Guevara. Other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Just a minute, Commissioner Dominguez, Commissioner Armstrong.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Ms. Guevara, for the answer to Commissioner Brinkard's question. I think you answered really well. Why this petition is allowed under the rules? I think his question was, was why do it now instead of as part of the triennial review? So is there a reason for why we want to do it sooner than we're required to?
Commissioner Chair and Chairman Thompson, this is a complicated criterion development, and it is best done as a separate event from the triennial. As stated, our triennial is quite a ways out. We have been working on this since before September 2020. Actually, I think we first started having conversations in 2019. So this petition and this action is ready for review by the commission, and it is the department's preference that we do this outside of the triennial now.
Understood. Thank you for that answer.
Mr. Dominguez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, a couple of questions for Mr. Rose. Um, Mr. Rose, I noticed within the body of the petition, there's the proposed changes to the specific sections of the rule. I was looking through all the attachments to your petition, and maybe I just overlooked it, but was there a copy of the entire rule in redline format attached to the petition?
Commissioner Dominguez, I believe so. If you look particularly at the beginning, pages two and three, we outline the changes to the criteria and how they should apply. Obviously, it doesn't include those sections of 900, which aren't being amended. So it shows those sections in underline and strikeout in legislative format as to the changes to those particular sections. And part of the reason why we didn't include the entire section 900 is that it's incredibly lengthy. The bulk of the provisions are affected by this proposal, so we can certainly provide those, but the rest of the, of this, and just to reiterate, this draft and the way this was phrased was vetted with the department before submitting it, so it has their imprimatur on it as well, but we didn't include all of 900 because it wasn't affected by the proposal. We can certainly provide that, if that's appropriate, but I think at this point, this focus is on exactly what we're proposing to change, and nothing extraneous.
Okay, thank you for that, and I understand your rationale there. The question at hand then goes to the petitioning process, and under 20.1.6200B, so this is under the rule for rulemaking, where it talks about the items required for petitioning. It indicates a copy of the entire rule, including the proposed regulatory changes indicating any language proposed to be added or deleted shall be attached to the petition. And it goes on further. They indicate that all of these items are required in order for the commission to accept the petition. So, Mr. Chair, I guess the question at hand is whether the commission can actually accept the petition. Granted, this may appear to be splitting hairs, but recently, the commission has been scrutinized and questioned regarding following statutes and regulations, particularly related to rulemaking. So I bring this up from the standpoint that I would hate to see us get started down the road and get to a rulemaking, and another party file a motion indicating the commission failed failed to properly follow the petitioning regulation itself. So that's my rationale for bringing this to everyone's attention. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Dominguez, can you recite, repeat the citation?
That will be 20.1.6200B.
Thank you.
And that's titled "Prehearing Procedures: Petition for Regulatory Change."
And it's the third sentence in that paragraph, or that subparaphrase that Commissioner Dominguez is referring to.
By no means am I trying to muddy the water on this, but we seem to have members of the public that look for opportunities to criticize the commission's actions, and I would hate to see that throw a kink into the process.
And if I might, Mr. Chair, I mean, what option we have, and it's truly the commission's choice. It's rules certainly, and you can decide how to implement them, but if you decide that that a copy of the entire 900 is a predicate to go into hearing, we can certainly provide that to you within the next couple of days. One option, and subject obviously to your counsel's advice, is to is to adopt the, or at least make a decision on the petition to go to hearing contingent on us filing a copy of the entire part, Rule 900, with changes by a date certain. And that's certainly something we can do. I hate to put this off again until your August meeting to go through the same exercise, potentially, so it's really your choice at this point. I think, as I indicated, the actual changes to the section are provided. As I indicated, the, the actual changes to the section are provided. Uh, but we can, we can put together all of 900, albeit with all the tables. It may take a few, a little while to get that done, but we can certainly do that within the next day or two, if, if that's the commission's choice. What's the commission's pleasure?
What is the counsel's position on?
I'm, I'm in agreement that it can be asked on contingency, and it's on the record. Make your decision and then once the, once the, the application is in.
In that case, I would move that we accept the petition. We set a, uh, October meeting, the chairs to do the hearing officer, appoint the hearing officer contingent upon the parties presenting both.
Clear? Need a second?
Uh, should we determine a date? I wish that should be submitted for the next day or two, but maybe?
End of the week?
12th?
I would move, you know, week amendment for a week from now.
Commissioners?
Uh, so you're proposing the 16th, Tuesday, the 16th?
Yes.
I second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to grant a request for a hearing in October, contingent on receiving a full copy of the regulations 20 points, 6.4.900 within a week. Clear? You ready to vote?
Um, Mr. Chair, I do see an entry of appearance, uh, from Nick Maxwell, Nick, Mr. Maxwell on the record, but I don't see him with us here today. I just want to make sure he's not here to say anything before we vote.
Mr. Maxwell, are you present? Okay, I assume he's not. Thank you. We ready to vote? Ms. Jones?
I will, and let me just make one more brief announcement. Make sure that everyone is putting the microphone towards them. Commissioners, just, they're online, they're having difficulty hearing you. As to the vote on, on the, on the motion on the floor, Vice Chair Armstrong, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Brankard?
Yes.
Commissioner Condalaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Fry?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams? Circle back to her. Commissioner Paladugu?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Veahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Zemlik?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams, can you hear us and are you able to cast a vote? Chair Thompson? The, you have sufficient votes for, for the motion to pass.
Just to clarify, that's, that'll be at the October 8th commission meeting? It will be at the regular meeting in October. I don't have a calendar.
It is the 8th.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rose, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I'm here for the next item as well, so yes. So the next item is WQCC 24-35, City of Santa Fe's request for hearing and answer to the administrative compliance order. Uh, Mr. Chair, again, my name, for the record, my name is Louis Rose. I'm an attorney with Montgomery and Andrews here in Santa Fe. This involves a request for hearing and answer to a compliance order issued by the department against the City of Santa Fe. With the request for hearing filed, I think the statute and your rules require that you set and hold a hearing on the petition within, and I don't remember, it's 90 days or 60, but wanted to represent to you that, that depending on, on when you decide to hold a hearing, City of Santa Fe is willing to waive um, its options of having a hearing, or at least its right to a hearing within the timeframe. The city evidently wants to explore settlement with the department before going to hearing. Waiving that deadline will allow that to, that to happen. I'm not sure of the department's position. I assume they would agree, but we'll, we'll let, and I think Ms. Chai is, is also here on that item as well, but we'll let, she can certainly represent the department's position. But if you decide, when you hold a hearing, obviously you're going to need to decide whether to assign a hearing officer as well as schedule a hearing. And I think for compliance orders, it would certainly be my preference that the commission hire a hearing officer rather than letting one, letting maybe isn't the right word, assigning one of the commissioners to be the hearing officer, but that's your choice. This is, this is like, if it goes to hearing, it's likely to be contentious and potentially could be appealed. So I'll leave that up to you as to how you want to deal with the process moving forward. So let me just clarify, you're in negotiations with the Environment Department? And you, uh, hope that there will be some negotiated settlement? Um, I think as to the latter, yes. As to the former, I know there's been meetings with the department where they've risen to the level of actually settlement discussions. I don't know, I wasn't privy to them, but, but I think that's the hope is that being given a deadline and some time, you know, there will be a resolution of this. But as to the contents, what that resolution might be and what the likelihood of success is, um, I can't represent to you what, what that will be, but I assume you don't want to go to a hearing in the next 90 days. And I'm not sure I do either, but it's not my choice. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Chai?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair and Commission members. Uh, again, my name is Lisa Chai. I'm here on behalf of the department, on behalf of Gloria Luthero and, uh, Crystal Weatherly. So I'm just covering this case today. This morning, I talked to Jeff Wexler, who I believe is lead counsel from Montgomery and Andrew for the City of Santa Fe. And my, um, understanding is that Mr. Wexler was going to immediately file an unopposed motion to waive the 90-day requirement for setting a hearing. Um, my understanding is that Montgomery and Andrews was more recently retained on this. And, um, since I am covering for, um, Ms. Weatherly, um, I would not be able to address whether actual negotiations had commenced. But we are in agreement that, um, Montgomery and Andrews should file the unopposed motion for the waiver of the 90-day hearing requirement to allow everyone to assess the case. And the citation, in case you want it, for the, um, waiver of the 90-day requirement is 20.1.3.19, uh, B as in boy, one.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
As to the form of the waiver, I think we can work with commission counsel as to, as to what the appropriate form might be, whether it's a motion or a stipulation. I'm not sure, but that's something we can work the details out with your counsel and with the department. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mr. Fry. Um, thoughts from the commission? Commissioner Brinkert?
Mr. Chair, do we need to appoint? Uh, or can we delegate that to you?
I think in, in other previous actions, you've given me the responsibility of appointing. Uh, I do understand that counsel has talked to, um, Alicia Worth, and she is willing to serve as a hearing officer on this case. How do you want to proceed?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yeah, just to continue that discussion as to how to proceed, um, given the discussion about the potentials for discussion amongst the parties, I would, would suggest that the commission could accept the petition and assign you to coordinate for a hearing officer and then let the hearing officer work out a scheduling order which would then potentially push the hearing date out. I don't know that we actually have to establish the hearing date today.
Okay.
That could push, push things out to allow for the time for the parties to see if there's middle ground.
Thoughts? So does that require a motion? So we'd have a motion to, uh, to, uh, grant a request for a hearing. I would, uh, be given authority to appoint a hearing officer, but the hearing would not be, we would not require that it be scheduled within 90 days. Yes, thank you. Pursuant to 20.1.3.19B. I would entertain either other comment or a motion. Commissioner Brankert?
Uh, Mr. Chair, given that we have a, a verbal motion to waive the 90-day deadline and a statement of no opposition from the Environment Department, I move that the commission uh, grant the chair the authority to appoint a hearing officer in this matter, who may then issue any scheduling orders as necessary.
Thank you.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Are you ready to vote? Ms. Jones, would you call a roll, please?
Yes, sir. Vice Chair Armstrong, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Brankard?
Yes.
Commissioner Condalaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez? Commissioner Fry?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner McWilliams? Commissioner Paladugu?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Veahill?
Yes.
And Commissioner Zemlik?
Yes.
Let me see, Commissioner McWilliams has been casting her vote. She says yes in the chat, so the motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're going to move on to, um, WQCC 24-36, which is a petition, NMD, for approval of a MDL for the Gila, for, yes, for the Gila and Lower Rio Grande Watersheds. And I think Mr. Knight, you're representing commission, I mean, the department?
Yes. Uh, thank you. Uh, Chair Thompson, uh, commissioners, good morning. My name is Andrew Knight. I am the Assistant General Counsel for New Mexico Environment Department. And, uh, with me, with me today from our Surface Water Quality Bureau are Heidi Henderson, Lucas Gronky, um, Lynette Wovara, uh, Jason Martinez, and Mike Baca. Uh, Heidi Henderson and, uh, Lucas Gronky will be presenting, uh, are these two petitions, uh, for us today. We would like to, uh, combine agenda, these two agenda items into one. And I would like to clarify that, uh, we would not, we will not be requesting a hearing today. We will be presenting these two items, uh, and asking for the commission to approve them or, uh, to be submitted to the EPA for final approval. And, uh, we have, uh, we have filed these two petitions and, uh, we have a, uh, presentation that we would like to make. Uh, again, uh, Ms. Henderson will be doing the first part of that. And Mr. Gronky will be doing the second part of that. And, uh, if there are no, uh, questions from the commission, if there are, I'm happy to, uh, answer them or have one of our, uh, staff people answer them. But if, if not, we can go ahead and um, make our presentation and then the commission can ask any questions based off of that. And, uh, I don't know if there is anyone from the public that would like to, uh, comment on this, on these specific items, but if, if there is, uh, I think we can, uh, you know, provide a time to do that after the presentations.
Okay, that sounds good to me. So before we begin, is there anyone on the commission that has concerns about that strategy of combining the two MDL, the discussion of the two TMDLs? Okay, hearing none. We'll go ahead and proceed and, um, Mr. Knight, you can be in charge.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Henderson?
Um, thank you. And, um, we passed out paper copies of the presentation, um, to the commissioners here in person. Um, and for those of you online, um, it was filed as a doctored matter, so it's available on the commission's doctored matter website or the Surface Water Quality Bureau TMDL website, if you're interested in following along, uh, to the presentation this morning. So as Mr. Knight said, uh, we are here this morning to request approval of the Gila River and Lower Rio Grande TMDLs and also the Canadian and Upper Rio Grande Lake TMDLs. TMDLs are listed in the Federal Clean Water Act. The purpose of the Clean Water Act is to restore and maintain the chemical, physical, and biological integrity of the nation's waters in order to reach a level of water quality that provides for the protection and propagation of fish, shellfish, and wildlife, and provides for recreation in and on the water. Section 303D of the Clean Water Act requires states to develop TMDLs. As far as a framework for restoring polluted waters in New Mexico, it starts with the development of water quality standards. We then monitor and assess the surface waters in the state of New Mexico and compare those data against the water quality standards. And those water bodies not meeting the water quality standards are then included on the list of impaired waters or the 303D list. And those impaired waters then are addressed with a TMDL document. Following a TMDL, it's then used in two of our other programs, um, including issuing and revising point source permits through the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Program and, uh, also in minimizing non-point sources through best management practices or BMPs and 319 program. So total maximum daily loads, or a TMDL, is the maximum amount of a pollutant that can enter a stream without causing an impairment or an exceedance of the water quality standard. A TMDL is a calculation of the water quality standard times the flow, times a conversion factor in order so that the final TMDL number is in a daily load. A TMDL document is a water quality plan that establishes specific goals to meet water quality standards and includes pollution reduction estimates and information and suggestions leading to the development of watershed-based plans, which discuss control measures to protect the chemical, physical, and biological integrity. which discuss control measures to protect the chemical, physical, and biological integrity of the water body. A TMDL is divided into three portions: the load allocation, or LA, the waste load allocation, or WLA, and the MOS, or Margin of Safety. The MOS is the authorized margin of safety to account for uncertainty. The load allocation is pollution from any nondescript source and is addressed best through BMPs. The waste load allocation is pollution from a known confined source and is controlled through NPDS permits. General requirements for TMDL approval are addressed in 40 CFR. 40 CFR Section 130.6 requires New Mexico to incorporate TMDLs into the statewide water quality management plan after EPA approval. TMDLs are subject to public review as outlined in the continuing planning process. Public participation requirements are outlined in Section 14 of New Mexico's Water Quality Management Plan and Continuing Planning Process Document. So that all serves as a background on TMDLs. The next slides then will be specifically discussing the first TMDL document that we're requesting approval of. That would be the Gila and Lower Rio Grande TMDLs. That document includes one boreon TMDL for the Rio Grande from the international Mexico boundary to the Texas border, two E. coli TMDLs from the San Francisco River, Box Canyon to Whitewater Creek, and Mangus Creek from the Gila River to Mangus Springs, one plant nutrient TMDL on Mule Creek from San Francisco River to Mule Springs, one sedimentation TMDL on the San Francisco River from Centerfire Creek to the Arizona border, and seven temperature TMDLs: Halita Creek, Los Anamos Creek, Mangus Creek, the Mimbrus River, San Francisco River, Whitewater Creek, and Willow Creek. For this specific TMDL, the public participation process was followed according to requirements outlined in the CPP. Public notice for the Gila River and Lower Rio Grande TMDL was published on the Surface Water Quality Bureau website on August 8, 2023. The notice was also sent to over 1,900 email addresses on the Surface Water Quality Bureau Gov Delivery email list on August 8. The 30-day public comment period started on August 8 and ended September 8. The TMDL was made available for public review via the Bureau website and upon request. The Bureau hosted a virtual public meeting via WebEx on Wednesday, August 30, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. A total of 12 stakeholders attended that meeting. And there were a few comments during the meeting, some questions about permits and otherwise questions about general watershed health. We received one set of formal public comments from the New Mexico Department of Agriculture. That's included as an appendix of the TMDL. And the only changes as a result of public comment were to Section 10, and that was simply just updating the dates and times of the public meetings that had occurred during the public comment period. So in November 2023, the Bureau made the final draft, TMDL draft, available to the public via posting on the Surface Water Quality Bureau TMDL website. The Surface Water Quality Bureau recommendation at this time is to approve and incorporate this TMDL as proposed. And with that, I will hand the presentation over to Mr. Gronky, who will present about the lake TMDLs.
Good morning, Commission. I'm going to be presenting on the 2024 Canadian and Upper Rio Grande Lakes TMDL. This TMDL included four different lakes: Eagle Nest Lake, Lake Maloya, Santa Cruz Lake, and Sherry Pond North. Santa Cruz Lake was found to be impaired for total recoverable aluminum, plant nutrients, and temperature. Eagle Nest Lake, Lake Maloya, and Sherry Pond North were found to be impaired for plant nutrients. The public participation process was followed according to the requirements outlined in the CPP. Public notice of the Canadian and Upper Rio Grande Lakes TMDL was published on the Surface Water Quality Bureau website on April 15, 2024. Notice of the pending TMDL was provided to the Pueblos of Taos and Nambay Water Quality Staff on April 9. The notice was also sent to 3,394 email addresses on the Surface Water Quality Bureau Gov Delivery email list on April 15, 2024. The 30-day public comment period started April 15 of 2024 and ended May 15 of 2024. The TMDL was made available for public review via the Surface Water Quality Bureau website and upon request. Bureau hosted two virtual public meetings via WebEx on Wednesday, May 1, from 1:00 to 2:30 p.m. and 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. A total of five stakeholders attended these two meetings. There were no comments during the public meetings. However, myself, the presenter, did receive a phone call shortly after the first public meeting regarding land ownership and wildfires in the Lake Maloya watershed. This phone call was summarized and included in the response to comments appendix of the final TMDL. I also attended an in-person meeting of the Santa Cruz Watershed Group on May 9 at the Chimaya Museum to give a presentation on this TMDL. The presentation focused on Santa Cruz Lake, which is located in their watershed of concern. Surface Water Quality Bureau solicited input on probable sources from the Santa Fe or the Santa Cruz Watershed Group concerning the total recoverable aluminum, plant nutrients, and temperature impairments of Santa Cruz Lake. Their impairment on probable sources was incorporated into this TMDL. The Bureau received four sets of public comments: one from Christopher Otingle, one from Dan Campbell, one from Doug Ebe, and one from the New Mexico Department of Game and Fish. And based on these comments, the Bureau made some changes to the TMDL document. Surface Water Quality Bureau included more information regarding the impacts of the 2011 Track Fire in the Lake Maloya watershed. This information was added to the Lake Maloya watershed description section of the TMDL, Section 1.1.4. We also updated all lake description sections, including 1.1.1, 1.1.3, 1.1.5, and 1.1.7 with more accurate fish stocking information from the New Mexico Department of Game and Fish using their 2022 statewide fisheries management plan. In this TMDL's executive summary, the Bureau added a definition of the integrated report, and we also expanded on the definition of TMDL. In Section 8 regarding public participation, this section was updated to include the date and times of the meetings and to reference the appendix containing Surface Water Quality Bureau responses to public comments. Minor grammatical and spelling errors were also corrected throughout the TMDL. On June 26, 2024, the Bureau made the final TMDL draft available to the public and the WQCC by posting on the Surface Water Quality Bureau TMDL website page. The Surface Water Quality Bureau recommends to improve, incorporate the TMDL as proposed.
So just to, sorry, just to wrap up our presentation. When the TMDL is approved by the New Mexico Water Quality Control Commission, the signed orders will be posted to the Bureau website. A letter requesting TMDL approval and approval of the update to the New Mexico Water Quality Management Plan will be sent to EPA Region 6 along with the signed WQCC orders. Once final approval is received from EPA Region 6, the EPA approval letter and final TMDL will be posted to the Bureau website. The final slide includes our contact information, and that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, all three of you. Questions, comments? Let me start. On the Gila, Lower Rio Grande, I, I'm pleased that you included, I'm specifically speaking towards the E. coli TMDL. I'm pleased that you included regrowth as a potential source, and you know, Ms. Henderson, that that's sort of a pet peeve of mine because I think in these trophic warm streams during the summer, that is a significant source. I don't, yeah, I'm also disappointed you didn't cite my paper, but that's okay. So I'm pleased that it's there. I, I would hope as the Environment Department does further investigation on that parameter in these lower warm watersheds, that they consider doing some investigations on the possibility. It's a tough problem, but I think, I think it's a significant source, certainly in the Middle Rio Grande. That's an editorial comment, but thank you. Other question? So it's my understanding what you're asking today is that we approve this. We recognize that it is not a regulation, but rather a planning document. It will go to EPA. EPA will in turn pass their blessing on it. And so that if there are no comments, I'd entertain a motion to approve. And I don't know if we want to do these singly or together. We've got two different, in fact, I think it's best if we do them separately, as we've got, they're two, two different items on the agenda, so. Is anyone prepared? Commissioner Brankard, save me. Thank you.
Well, I'll make a motion, but first, maybe I can just ask a question about how this works for non-point source. Okay, you have a, you, this document creates these MDLs for these certain types of pollutant. Document names, probable pollutant sources. Okay, and then it says these will be incorporated into best management practices. Whose best manager practices, how, when, where, how does that work?
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Brankard, that's a good question. So once a TMDL is developed, the water then is available to apply for 319 funding to do watershed restoration projects. So the watershed groups in the area can apply for money to first develop a watershed-based plan. And within that plan, that is where they draft out the best management practices. Watershed groups work closely with staff in our watershed protection section to develop those documents. We rely on the watershed group to determine those best management practices. It's their backyard. It's their watershed. We want it to be led and guided by them with the support of our staff, so they can develop a watershed-based plan, and then once that plan is in place and they can apply for additional funding to do monitoring or restoration in that watershed. So developing and approving a TMDL is key in that process because the way the 319 grant program is currently structured is that TMDL needs to be in place before a watershed group can apply for funding to help restore their watershed.
And so who would be in these watersheds?
We have a number of examples throughout the state of watershed groups. Some watershed groups, like the Santa Cruz Watershed Group that Mr. Gronky mentioned, does include a mix of stakeholders and agency representatives. We have other cases where it's majority of agency representatives, or on the other side where it's mostly stakeholders, landowners, neighbors in the watershed. So we, again, staff in our watershed protection section are assigned to certain parts of the state, and they work with existing watershed groups, and they also work with communities to help form watershed groups.
So stakeholders would include farmers, ranchers, that are in agency groups. Now we're talking about federal-state land management agencies?
Yes, game and fish, Forest Service, BLM, and local soil and water conservation districts are often on those groups.
Other questions? Yes, Mr.?
Hi, I just wanted to ask, I just wanted to ask about the temperature TMDLs, are they regulated?
Chair Thompson, Commissioner, it's a good question also. So most of our temperature TMDL statewide are non-point source only TMDLs. We don't have a lot of permities in the state that are discharging heat, heated water to a watershed, so it's mostly non-point source. And that's a non-regulatory side of the work that we do. So it follows the process, just like I mentioned to Commissioner Brankard, as far as watershed group and developing a watershed-based plan, and then moving on from there to either monitoring or restoration. So some activities that would be a part of that would be increasing the shade. The TMDL talks about a few different typical remediation actions, and one of them would be increasing shade. So groups in the past have applied for money to do some plantings of native plants along the riparian area in order to increase shade. We can also reduce the width-to-depth ratio so that it's not as wide and shallow to help with the temperature. So groups can also apply for funding, not only for restoration, man, I cannot figure this out. They can apply for the funding for restoration with the planting and also monitoring. So we've had groups who have applied for money to purchase thermograph devices that they can deploy in the stream, and so then they can monitor the effectiveness of the plantings that they've maybe done over the years to see as the temperature reduces. And then again, our Bureau monitors all the streams, rivers, and lakes in the state on a rotational basis. So every, right now, it's about every eight to 10 years that we're in a watershed. So in theory, you know, we write a TMDL, the groups start some projects, and then we're able to do some effective monitoring when we're back in the watershed after they finish their projects.
Thank you.
I just add to that, temperature is one of the most frequently violated water quality standards in the state, both in the north part of the state and the south part of the state. It's a real problem, and it's only going to get worse. It's a real tough one. Other questions or comments? Okay, so again, we're, the department is asking for a motion to approve the TMDL. Commissioner Brankard?
Sure. And by TMDL, I assume you mean this report titled Total Maximum Daily Load.
Yes, Chair Thompson, Commissioner Brankard, there are two TMDL documents that we're requesting approval of: the Gila and Lower Rio Grande document and all the TMDL calculations within it, and then the Canadian and Upper Rio Grande Lake TMDL document with all of the individual TMDL calculations in it.
Thank you. I move approval of the total maximum daily load for the Gila River and Lower Rio Grande. I think it will be approved as proposed by the New Mexico Department. Thank you. Mr. Zemlik?
I second that.
Mr. Paladugu, thank you very much. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Further questions, comments, discussion?
Oh, well, Vice Chair Armstrong, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Brankard?
Yes.
Commissioner Condalaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Frye?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams? Commissioner Paladugu?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Chair Thompson? Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Zemlik?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. This is not my morning. So we have approved the EMDL for the Gila River and Lower Rio Grande. Now we'd like to consider the Canadian and Upper Rio Grande Lake EMDL.
This is Commissioner Paladugu. If there are no questions, I'd like to to approve the petition for approval of the Gila River, Lower Rio Grande TMDLs, and Canadian, oh, sorry, it's the Canadian and Upper Rio Grande Lake TMDLs presentation.
Just to clarify, this is the second one? Yeah, yes. 24-37.
Commissioner Zemlik, can I second?
Okay. Been moved and seconded to approve WQCC 24-37, petition for approval of the EMDLs for the Canadian and Upper Rio Grande Lakes. Ready to vote, discussion? Okay.
Vice Chair Armstrong, you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Brinkard?
Yes.
Commissioner Candelaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez? Commissioner Fry?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams? Has been casting her vote in the chat, but. Mr. Paladugu?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Zemlik?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Now, before we leave this, I'm, have a, will the Environment Department prepare the proposed order that will be submitted to EPA?
Commissioner or Chair Thompson, yes, yes, we will prepare that.
Okay.
We have prepared it, in fact. So, yeah, that'll be ready for signature.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on those two issues?
Yes, Chair Thompson, this is Commissioner Fry. I'm just wondering, will we receive notice when the EPA has approved?
Mr. Knight?
Oh, we will be happy to report back to the commission at its next regular meeting after we receive EPA approval. I'm not sure of the timeframe for that, but if.
Once EPA receives a document from us, they have 30 days to approve. So we typically receive it within those 30 days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Okay, Agenda Item 10 is to schedule our next meeting and determine if there are any upcoming mission matters. Yeah, so our next scheduled meeting is, I believe, August 5 to continue the hearing on the water reuse rules. The next scheduled meeting of the commission to hear other issues, I guess, would be second Tuesday of the month.
Correct, September 10th, if you don't want to have a meeting of the second week of that hearing.
Okay. My preference would, and I'll ask the commission's opinions as well. My preference would be not to have a meeting in August to hear other matters, because we're going to be fried by the time we hear those water reuse rules. I think we've got eight days scheduled for those, for that hearing. So my preference would be not to, but if something comes up that is time-critical, I think I'd like to reserve. And that would be the 14th? Or it would be the 13th?
The 13th.
Okay. So. Anybody have further thoughts on our next meeting? Okay. So our last item is a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, before we adjourn?
Please.
This was prior to when you got out of the traffic jam, but we had deferred on item number five due to lack of somebody to report on that. I was checking to see if anybody had shown up or not, and then secondly, I don't believe that was an action item. So I don't know that we would have to table the item. We could just roll it to the next meeting.
Is there anyone from the Environment Department that would like to address that? I agree with Commissioner Dominguez. My reading of that was, it was not an action item. It was just for information only. So let's table that until our next regular meeting and I want to make sure nobody has any disagreement with table it. Okay. Again, at this point, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Chair Thompson, one more thing, sorry. I'm wondering if we can get a list for the August hearings, the order of testimony. I probably have it somewhere, but it'd be nice to have that again before that meeting, before that hearing.
We'll contact the hearing officer, get that list, and we'll send that to all the commissions. That's a good suggestion. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So I move to adjourn.
Thank you. Second. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you all.